I don't know. You're saying this. I mean, essentially. On your. More than. You're reading. You're reading. Right. There is. There is. There is. There is. There is. I just remember. Right. There is. There is. There is. I was like, what's the game? We can't use that. Well. Well. You. I'm saying. I was. I'm saying. 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 Do they have. Like. Do they have. Do they have. Good job.
I don't know this.
If the trader goes in, it doesn't have the. Do they have. I mean, they don't. They don't have. And right about how. I didn't. I didn't. I didn't. I didn't. I mean. They're too late. Do they hit you one percent percent? Yes. I think. 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 One. Because. Good job. I got. 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 Okay. Thank you. How about. Any. I'm. 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 Please. I told you. Please. 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 Your members. Oh. I had a question. I want to think. I mean, I could. Let us. We. We said they could have. He had. 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 He didn't have that. He's. 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 Always. You have. You have. And if you want. Yeah. And then. He says. Fifteen minutes ago. That's. Wherever. I don't think. Yeah. I hope. And. Because. Even. Even. I don't know what that is. Some of that. I don't know. I don't know. The whole. He said. They had guys. And they. And that. But. He. 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 I don't know what that is. Some of that. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. He said. They had guys. And they. And that. But. He. 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 Yes, sir. I don't. 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 Yeah. I don't. I don't. You guys. I don't. I don't. I don't. She got. She got. She got. She got. She got. Yeah. Okay. Never. Yeah. I'm. 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 Well, even. I still have. Here we go. Like to call to order the Keokuk City Council meeting, June nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five, five thirty P. M., five oh one Main Street. Can we stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public where which it stands, one nation, their God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call? Renshaw.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Mullen.
Here.
Hackley.
Here.
Dade.
Here.
Andrews.
Here.
Tillman.
Here.
Bryant.
Here.
Greenwald.
Here.
All present. Item number four, mayor's correspondence. February, June twentieth, two thousand twenty-five, we have Cooking with Brenda at eleven A. M. at the Public Library, and that's part of the Juneteenth celebration. Number two would be, Care will hold a soul food dinner from five to nine P. M. at the Keokuk Labor Temple. This is also a part of the Juneteenth celebration, and the music will be provided by the Matt Roberts Band. Item number three is music at the Rand Park Pavilion at seven P. M. by the band The Boys. Fat Jimmy's and Dog House Food Trucks will be there to provide food for purchase. Saturday, June twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five, the Keokuk Farmers Market will be at the River City Mall from eight to eleven A. M. Juneteenth Walk Run in Rand Park will start at eight A. M. Juneteenth Fishing Derby at the Rand Park Pond at nine A. M. And then the Juneteenth Festival at Rand Park from ten A. M. to four P. M. with games, vendors, a basketball tournament, DJ music, and raffles. Unity of the funk will play at the Pavilion at six thirty P. M. Kids Puzzle Race at the Keokuk Public Library will begin at eleven A. M., and there'll be pro wrestling at L. Trains. I don't have a time for that, but it is to raise money for the Homeless Alliance Building. And item number seven is Main Street Incorporated Summer Fund and Fundraiser from six thirty P. M. to ten thirty P. M. at Fifth and Main Street. There is still time for tomorrow to get tickets. Then Thursday, June twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five, the Keokuk Chamber Live After Five at the South Side Boat Club, starting at five o'clock P. M. And Friday, June twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five, the ribbon cutting ceremony of the Road of Honor at one o'clock P. M. at the Keokuk National Cemetery, with cake and ice cream following at the Keokuk American Legion Post Forty-Seventh. And yes, it is official, we do have a Road of Honor. Isn't that great? I'd like to send out a thanks to Trish Payne and the K. Play Organization for painting the Tolby Building. It looks really nice. And after that, we have a presentation. So if Mr. Dennis and Chuck would come forward.
I'm Chuck Peicher from ten oh one Morgan Street, Third Ward. Also a member of the Sons and Daughters of Pioneer Rivermen, which is a historical organization that's been around since nineteen thirty-nine. We've. They give out grants every year for a variety of things. The Verity has received three or four or five over the years, and so this year I had applied for ten thousand dollars for painting, and we've received eight thousand three hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And so we wanted to present that to the city tonight, and I guess we're going to give that to Bill. So.
I like that.
Sure. We'll get a picture. Okay. Thank you.
And as always, we need to eat, drink, and shop local, and kindness matters. Item number five is citizen's request. If there's any one here that has something they would like to present to the council, please come to the podium, state your name and your address, and take about two minutes, and let us know what you need. Okay. Okay. Item number six, consent agenda. Minutes of the regular council meeting of June fifth, two thousand twenty-five, minutes of the Keokuk Civil Service Commission of June eleventh, two thousand twenty-five, certified list for the Keokuk Fire Department for promotion to the rank of lieutenant, resolution approving a liquor license for the bar, nine fourteen Main Street, Class C retail alcohol license effective immediately, resolution approving a liquor license for Casey's number twenty-five ninety-five at three twenty-sixth Main Street, Class E retail alcohol license effective July first, two thousand twenty-five, resolution approving a liquor license for the Hawkeye, one oh five North Park Drive, Class C retail alcohol license effective July seventh, two thousand twenty-five, resolution approving a liquor license for Maude Convenience Store, thirty-three forty-five Main Street, Class E retail alcohol license effective July twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, cash receipts and treasuries report for May, two thousand twenty-five, approved cigarette tobacco licenses for July first, two thousand twenty-five through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six, accept a resignation of Richard Meredith from the Veterans Memorial Commission effective immediately, appointment of Larry Looney to the Veterans Memorial Commission fulfilling a term to expire June first, two thousand twenty-nine, special event permit for the South Side Boat Club, July third, twenty twenty-five, fireworks at Hovindur Landing, six P. M. to eleven P. M. I need a motion to pay bills and transfers listed in Register's number five four seven seven through five four seven nine. I need a motion to approve the agenda, including the consent agenda.
No move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes. Item number seven, I need a motion to remove from the table what we put on there last time in reference to the north side of South Eighteenth.
Second.
Any discussion?
This is just to remove from the table.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Now I need a motion to approve the third and final reading of an ordinance amending section nine point two eight point zero four zero dealing with the parking regulations for the northerly side of South Eighteenth Street from Main Street to Carroll Street.
No move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Brian, do you have any updates for us with your meeting with Dr. Lawler?
Yeah, we went out and looked at the street again, and then also spoke with Chief Rose and Chief Baum on the emergency vehicles being able to get up and down if we did allow two-sided parking, and that just isn't safe and not possible. So my recommendation to be to uphold what the council had originally decided to do one-sided parking.
Were there any other discussions about other parking opportunities for the?
Yes, I talked with Ms. Lawler, I believe, Monday or Tuesday on the phone. We advised her that she can't apply for handicap parking for either on the Eighteenth Street side or on the Johnson Street side. That would have been my recommendation. I also advised her she could call and talk to Pam about, I don't know of really any other type of parking we could provide, but figured Pam would have more on the ordinance side of it than I would. But as of now, the handicap would be what I recommended the route should go.
I think she's going to submit. Um. You on limited. My major. Five. I have. Um. So. Um. Address it to.
Hey, Brian, was there any discussions when we, me and Roger was up and was talking to the lady, and she said that on Eighteenth Street, there used to be concrete, and there's not now? She mention that to you?
On Eighteenth, there used to be concrete?
On Eighteenth, in between the sidewalk and the curb. Back, back further than what the concrete is now.
She had never mentioned that to me, no. I do know, we provided her with additional concrete at the city's expense to fill in so there is no grass area in front of her building, and we took the concrete all the way to her building.
This was, this is in between the sidewalk and the curb. She says, there used to be, she told Roger and me that there used to be concrete there. When they done this work, they took that concrete out. It wasn't, it isn't back. She's now, when people steps out of the car, and if it's raining, they're stepping into mud. That's what she told me.
I'm assuming that would have to be on the Johnson Street side, then. Eighteenth Street side is a hundred percent concrete from the curb to the building.
Excuse me. Johnson Street side. Yes.
So we only took the project back so far to tie the road back in.
I said, you used to have concrete here, and she said, yes. And I said, do you have pictures of that? And she said, oh, yes.
She did not mention that to me.
She didn't. She mentioned both of us.
But we did add a significant amount of concrete all the way up along her building on the Johnson Street side.
I seen that. She's concerned about the customers getting out of the cars and stepping into.
We even, I mean, we even added a drop-off area, no charge to her, with a drop curb all along Johnson Street.
Yeah, I seen that.
And that wasn't like that before. That did have a full curb before.
Any more discussion? Okay, so we have a first and a second. We've had the discussion, so we need to vote on the third and final reading. I will need a first, I mean, a roll call on that. Renshaw.
Aye.
Walker.
Aye.
Mullen. Hackley.
Aye.
Dade.
Aye.
Andrews.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Bryant.
Aye.
Greenwald.
Aye.
Ayes. Motion passes on that, and we move on to item number eight. Now's the time and place for the public hearing to repel Title Nineteen plat and subdivisions of the Keokuk Municipal Code and adopt a new Title Nineteen subdivisions. A public hearing notice was published in the Daily Gate City on June sixth, two thousand twenty-five. I am opening the public hearing at five forty-two. Do we have any comments?
So Jim came down today, and he had just been looking through the subdivision code. He stated that street lighting may be something that we wanted to add to the actual specifications. So if the council would like me to add that, we don't have to have the first reading tonight. It's not that big of a deal. We can just hold the public hearing, go ahead and make that change, and then bring it back for the first reading in a couple weeks.
What was his opinion about the street lighting?
So is this. No, this is no fun, having a microphone that doesn't light up and tell you that it's actually on. Looking through the subdivision ordinance, what Pam has brought forward from planning and zoning.
Planning and zoning.
Is significantly better, more detailed than what was in the previous code section that you're looking to replace. You have a good set of different pieces of infrastructure that there's requirements for adding as part of this, and I'm sorry, I'm trying to find in the.
That would be nineteen twenty-eight, Jim.
Nineteen what? Yeah, so you have, in nineteen twenty-eight, like point oh five is streets, and then there's sanitary sewers, storm sewers. I was doing some, just cross-checking between the old code and the new one, and also looking against Burlington, another code that I'm familiar with. And one of the things that was in there, and had been an issue previously in Burlington, was having a plat brought forward with no streetlights in it. And since it wasn't included in their ordinance book at the time, they had no way of forcing it on the developer. This is, their code now has a section in there that just requires streetlights to be put in in coordination with requirements from Lion Energy as their local provider. And I was just asking Pam if there was some thought of putting that in here. Maybe it's some value to have that section in there.
Okay, that makes sense.
Any further discussion? Was there any further discussion, city clerk? Have you had any written comments or objections been received? There being no further comments or objections on this matter, I will close the public hearing at five forty-five. Item eight B, so do we want to go ahead with this, Pam, or do we want to continue? Or?
I think we should give Pam an opportunity to add the street lighting.
Just one sentence is that we would add to it.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item nine A. Now's the time and a place for a public hearing on the request to amend Title Twenty of the Keokuk Municipal Code by adding adaptive reuse of special-use buildings in the residential zoning districts. A public hearing notice was published in the Daily Gate City on June sixth, two thousand twenty-five, and I am opening the public hearing at five forty-six.
So the planning commission reviewed this request, and this is not solely for Mrs. Valentine and Mr. McTavish, but this is how this ordinance came into play, is they're wanting to purchase a church over on Exchange Street and use it as an event center. They already have a home occupation for the home part of it as a hair salon, and it's not zoned for that. So we needed to add something into the code, and I think that, you know, old churches, schools, that type of thing, that possibly could be adaptive for a different use than what is, you know, allowed per the code. This would give an opportunity for the Board of Adjustment to review, to make sure that it's not going to deter from the neighborhood, and also just give it a chance for a different use for the building. I don't know if you two want to speak at all?
My name is David McTavish, and I live at twenty-one sixteen Des Moines Street. And we, this church that we're talking about, it's one of the oldest churches, if not the oldest church in Keokuk still standing, so we wanted to turn it into a wedding chapel, full-service salon, so people who are getting married have a one-stop shop, so they can just come in one place instead of running all over town, doing everything. Or, and if you look at the business model, the nearest place like that for an option is over a hundred miles away. So it would bring good things, revenue, to Keokuk. So it's kind of our kind of thing, replace a building that's just going to collapse. Like, we're trying to get in there and get this done so that we can save the building, number one. We want to restore it, so that keeps Keokuk's history. You know, it's pretty important to us, and that was one of the things that made this property shine. We're go-getters. We have all the skills between us to have the security to do this thing, so we just throw that out to you guys and then go through the hoops that we need to. And this has been a learning process for us this entire time, too. I've never bought any property before, you know, so it's kind of interesting to meet you guys and see how it works and learn how you guys do what you do, and we appreciate the opportunity to be here and see how this goes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? City clerk, are there any written comments or objections been received? There being no further comments or objections on this matter, I close the public hearing at five forty-nine. Item number nine B, I need a motion to approve the initial reading of an ordinance amending Title Twenty by adding adaptive reuse regulations of sections twenty point twenty point zero two zero, twenty point twenty-eight point zero two zero, and twenty point thirty-two point zero twenty zero, adding subsection thirty, adaptive use of a special-use building to section twenty point six eight point zero four zero, special uses designated, and adding section twenty point sixty-eight point zero nine zero, establishing purpose and standards for the adaptive reuse of a special-use building. Do I have a motion to approve?
No move.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Pam, if you could, just briefly walk us through what the process would be like for someone to then go through and be granted the adaptive reuse.
So once this has been established, a person would come in, fill out a form, which would go to the City Planning Commission and the Board of Adjustment. The City Planning Commission actually reviews, does a report to the Board of Adjustment. The City Planning Commission actually, um, reviews, uh, does a report to, um, the Board of Adjustment. There are recommendation, a recommendation committee. The Board of Adjustment looks at it. There's criteria that they have to actually look at as far as increasing traffics, um, utilities, uh, neighbor, the character of the neighborhood. There's several things that they have to look at. Um, they go through their criteria. Um, if all of those, um, are in favor of the request, they can approve the request. Otherwise, they deny the request. Um, and then at that point, if they, um, gave them the okay on it, there's 30 days that someone can appeal a decision, um, which does not go to the council. It goes to the, um, court. Um, so at that point, there's 30 days. If the court reviews it, they determine whether the, um, criteria was met to go ahead and approve. And if they do not feel it is, they remand it back to the Board of Adjustment.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? I will need a roll call.
Crenshaw?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Mullen? Cackley?
Aye.
Dade?
Aye.
Andrews?
Aye.
Tillman?
Aye.
Bryant?
Aye.
Greenwald?
Aye.
All ayes.
And I need a motion to waive, do I have a motion to waive the second and third reading of this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
And I will need a roll call.
Crenshaw?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Mullen? Cackley?
Nay.
Dade?
Aye.
Andrews?
Aye.
Tillman?
Aye.
Bryant?
Aye.
Greenwald?
Aye.
Eight one.
Then I need a motion to adopt and give final approval of this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Motion's pass. Item number 10, consider resolution setting fiscal year 2025, 2026 salaries for a per, for personnel of the City of Kiakuk of July 1st, 2025. I need a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Annual proposed positions, salaries, wages and salaries for the City of Kiakuk employees and staff recommends approval. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Item number 11, consider resolution approving allocation of funds from the hotel motel tax based on an amount estimated for fiscal year 2025 through 2026. I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Allocations of hotel motel tax as requested during the budget process. Staff recommends approval. Do I have any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Item number 12, consider resolution approving the petty cash and change funds for the fiscal year 2025 through 2026. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Annual approval of petty cash funds, staff recommends approval. Do I have any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Consider resolution approving the investment policy for fiscal year 2025 through 2026 for the City of Kiakuk. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Annual improvement, annual improvement of the investment policy 2029, 2019, staff recommends approval. Do I have any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Item number 14, consider resolution allocating economic development funds for the fiscal year 2025, 2026. Do I, I need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Allegations of economic development funds as requested during the budget process. Staff recommends approval. Do I have any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Item number 15, consider resolution authorizing fund tran, authorizing fund trans first for the fiscal year 2025. I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Allocations of economic development funds as requested during the budget process. Staff recommends approval. Do I have any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number 16, we will not be, um, making a motion on because the state has paused the funding for that. We received word today for that. So, um, forward onward, um, item number 17, do we have any council liaison reports? Item number 18, staff reports.
Um, I need to set up a code revision meeting for the next couple of weeks. So if anybody has anything that needs to go on code revision, please let me know. I will contact the committee and set that up. Um, we're getting some, I, we have somebody, a couple of people doing food carts, um, you know, push carts. Uh, we don't have anything in our ordinance on that, so, um, we need to, um, review that. And, um, we did have a Homes for Iowa house come in, was that this week? Yep, I think it was a Monday, um, that was on 14th Street. Thanks to the, thank you Police Department for putting up no parking signs on one side of the street. That was very helpful for them to get the, um, home in.
I have a few things, uh, as many of you may have seen on our social media, um, our K-9 officer Zolt, um, passed away this last week. He was diagnosed with cancer, inoperable cancer a couple of months ago. He was due to retire in August anyways, but obviously we would have preferred that, that he made it into retirement to go home with his handler for a while. But that's not the case. Um, we are still moving forward with our K-9 program through, uh, fun, funds that were raised. Um, we should have a new K-9 in September, October. Uh, our two recruits that are in the academy are about to finish up their seventh week. They're doing well. Uh, one of them was voted as the lieutenant of the class, uh, by their peers. And on June 12th, at the Governor's Traffic Safety Bureau Conference in Des Moines, uh, Officer Mason Shaw was selected to receive a, an award that's only given to one law enforcement officer in the state out of about 6,600 uh, for his efforts in combating impaired driving. Um, so he received that award last Thursday and, um, you know, he does a great job. And he, uh, also has been selected as our next K-9 handler.
Okay, um, I would just mention, I'm not used to how this process works here in terms of adding stuff during the course of the meeting, but, uh, we did a couple of extra transfers in what you normally see during the course of the year. Uh, we closed out the ARPA fund just to get it balanced out as that, we have fully expensed that and had gotten our reports into the, the state in terms of federal government and how the, how that had been, how those funds have been used. Um, two other funds that we had taken care of, uh, one of them was, that was, had a deficit of a little over 500,000, was a sewer account. Sewer has about five different accounts. I don't know how much we have budgeted in those over the course of the last few years, but there was a piece of equipment that had been bought back in 2023, I think. Or that was the majority of that, about 450,000. It was paid for out of a capital fund, but, but no money was transferred out of the operating fund to cover it. So this is basically cleaning up that, that account. Uh, and then the other major transfer, was it 750,000 for the Sid Center? Um, it is in an account that, it's on your treasures report every month, but it was also asked, where is it on the treasures report? Uh, one of your funds is, uh, that's on there is Fund 303. It's listed with, as capital equipment reserve or some, some title like that. And I am not exactly sure why that was ever, why the Sid Center, uh, why the Sid Center was in that fund or has been. But probably it was originally expensed there when the project occurred, uh, to bring that on back in 2017. Uh, and there's been deficits that have occurred there over the last several years. Uh, one thing I would note about that fund is, uh, I mean, we're looking at the budget for this next year. It is, at best, given that we have one renter in there at this time, uh, gonna have about a hundred and $50,000 deficit. If there are any major expenditures down there, the deficit in that account will be larger. We have no backup for that except for general fund. So that's, it's just a, it's one of several different hits that we, that hasn't really been looked at that probably needs to as time goes on and addressed as to how to make sure that all of these funds are sustainable. Um, so it, it's one that probably the Finance Committee at one, at some point will have some discussion about what do we need to be thinking about? And not just the Sid Center fund, but a lot of different funds at the, in how they interrelate with each other and what the impact is, not just for one year, but over the course of several years. Uh, and the other thing that I did want to mention, the, that, the grant, you know, we pulled, we just didn't vote on this contract with Spark Consulting. This is really a lot to do with what's going on in the federal government. There've been a lot of funds put on hold at, at a federal level. These are pass-through funds from the, through the state, uh, but they are not receiving their funds. So as of this time, they have told us, effective immediately, effective today, that any, any of these grants through the State Historical Society, I think it's State Historical Preservation Commission, um, that Iowa State Historic Preservation, any funds that are through them that are grant funded are just on hold. They don't know if or when they will be released. They, this project may be able to be brought forward in the future and hopefully it is. But it's, it's just until there's some, I mean, we've gone several months where there have been just a lot of questions as to what funds are or are not being held up at a federal level. And it's just something to keep track of. We do have other federal funding and there's no guarantees on any of it when, in the current environment that we're dealing with on a federal level. Uh, that's really all I wanted to point out for, at this time.
Anyone else?
Um, sorry, I would like to, um, so we still have money, um, that we have on a grant program. Um, it's the pilot program, Community Development Block Grant. Council, I am not sure what month that was, but we were, we're trying to expend money. We're having a hard time getting people, uh, applying and going through with all the paperwork. Um, so we're once again looking at the 1012 Belondo Building. Um, thinking that we very possibly, um, will put 300,000 toward that building, make it a four unit, um, if, uh, the Board of Adjustment will approve that. And, um, trying to get a developer in there to take care of that.
I'm sorry, what building did you say?
1012 Belondo.
Okay.
We had it on there to begin with, um, $200,000. We didn't get any bids. Um, we're, you know, I guess we're just going to look at it, see what we can get done. Um, and then, um, go from there. I just wanted you guys to be aware that we are kind of looking at that again.
Okay.
And the source of those funds is, uh, state?
State, yes, Community Development Block Grant, yep.
And the block grant was specifically for rehab?
Yes, in a targeted area, yes.
In a targeted area. And they have a hard deadline on this. Some of the, the funds that come for this type of project do not have a hard deadline, but the state's source of funding for this was an allocation of, of ARPA funds, one of their allocations. And all of, I mean, we had to have everything allocated and spent by last December. They have one more year on this set. There's no flexibility on when that money gets spent. So this is kind of into a situation where it's a use or lose it and making sure that we hit all of their hoops.
Do we have any more properties in that area to focus on besides that one though?
Yeah, we did, well, we have the one that we, 129, um, is it 129 North? One, I can't remember, 121 North 9th? It's across from the, uh, George Washington School.
Not the one that the guy from Mount Pleasant's already developing?
Yes, he's, yes, he's working on that.
Okay.
So he's actually, um, received all of his bids from subcontractors. That's under control. Um, we got those, everything signed. He got his building permit. He's been doing some work cleaning it out. Um, but yeah, it's already looking so much better. Um, so yep, we have that one. We had, I believe, eight other properties. They were rentals. Um, we sent the letters out. I think the only letters that we, we got returned were two. Um, and then those, the renters have to fill out the information on those. Um, and it's not really giving them any benefits, so they're kind of dragging their feet. Um, I think it would be a benefit to live in a, a home that's been repaired. But, you know, the landlord's actually getting the benefit out of it, but we just, they just aren't returning their information.
So the landlords don't actually have anything to do with the process?
They, they have to fill the initial form out. And then, um, there's, uh, two other, um, forms that are sent to that, well, they're, they're several pages long that the tenant has to fill out, um, to make sure that they are eligible for the low to moderate income. Um, you know, because it has to be a 15-year, uh, term on that, that they would have to comply. Um, so, um, we, I think those two of them have finished up, but then the rest of them have not. Um, Regional Planning has spent a lot of time, um, on these. Um, I think that there was $40,000, $42,000 maybe in admin fees. Um, they have stated that they pretty much have used all of that already. Um, so they're wanting to just get a project that we can just hopefully spend the rest of the money and get it taken care of with as little, um, there'll be quite a bit of effort on that process, but at least there won't be, you know, trying to babysit people getting stuff back to us.
Okay.
Pam, how much of that property, do they, does, does the city own the, there's a lot, empty couple of lots next door? Do we own that too?
We have done a 657, I believe, on that property. Um, so the vacant lot beside it, um, we will obtain sooner or later, which could be part of that, um, property, you know, so they would have more room. Um, you know, for, you know, people to, you know, sit, play, whatever.
But 1026, the city is not, did they do a, um, 657 on 1026? Are we toward the red house down? That's on the corner.
Yeah, we have not at this point, no.
Okay. Would that be an area to try to do some tiny veterans homes if we could establish it all?
If we could actually, um, what I would like to see have done is the property owner that has the rental on the alley, um, he owns the lot between those. I would like to see if he would, if we ever got that property, we could just trade. Um, so we would have contiguous properties and then he would own a full lot. Um, but I have not approached him with that yet because we don't own it.
Okay, thank you. Then item 919 is new business. And item number 20, I need a motion to adjourn. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Let's go home. And if you're not headed home, go out and watch the parade. The parade just started.